All right. Welcome, everyone. We're going to get started with the City of Everett Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, March 5th. Can we have roll call, please?
Chair Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Lavera.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
All right. Since we're missing a few members that'll be in shortly, we're going to go ahead and skip on down. Why don't we start off with staff comments?
Alan Giffen, Planning Director. No special announcements tonight. We will have, you know, the usual May or March 19th meeting, a third week, but we'll also have the special meeting dealing with the riverfront on the 26th this month. So, other than that, no announcements.
Okay. Does anybody have any reports they want to share, any information, news, family news? Interesting. All right. Well, then, I think we'll go ahead and get started on item number three, Shoreline Master Program periodic update. Ms. Stewart?
Thank you. Good evening. So, tonight, there are two things, two things I would like to talk to the Planning Commission about in preparation for your meeting, March 19th, when we'll have a draft resolution for your consideration regarding the Shoreline Master Program. So, there should be a short memo from me to you dated February 20th, and it's with a attachment of proposed wording changes for the City of Everett Comprehensive Plan, Section 1 and Section 2. And I'll just read the memo very quickly. So, consistent with past practice, the city will be adopting a standalone Shoreline Master Program. Staff has reviewed the Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations for consistency with the SMP and to ensure effective implementation of these proposed amendments. So, the suggested changes to the Comprehensive Plan are attached to the memo from me. And there are other changes proposed in the Comprehensive Plan, but they're in the land use element, and so that will be addressed in another resolution. So, the section number one, which is just the introduction to, in the Comprehensive Plan, talks about the legal requirements and community guidance for the Comprehensive Plan. And the Shoreline Management Act is different, obviously, than the Growth Management Act, and so staff is proposing a new Section B entitled Shoreline Management Act and Everett's Shoreline Master Program. And in a couple of sentences there, we're indicating that the Shoreline Master Program will no longer appear in the Comprehensive Plan in its entirety as a separate shoreline land use element, but rather will be referring to the standalone document that will be reviewed and adopted here at the local level and then approved by the state. So, this is an attempt to streamline and make sure we just have the one standalone document that we need to update over the years. So, that's essentially, it's almost a housekeeping item that we're proposing here with the Comprehensive Plan, but it is significant because the goals and the policies in the Shoreline Master Program are considered an element of the Comprehensive Plan, and so we have that wording proposed here. Are there any questions the commissioners have about that particular item?
I have a quick question.
Uh-huh.
So, when we get this document done, there'll be links to, if there's a digital copy up on the webpage, you'll be able to link to it in the verbiage of the document. Am I making sense there? In other words, when you're reading this in the Comprehensive Plan digitally, can you click so that you're redirected to the digital copy of the Shoreline Master Plan?
Yes. We will make sure that we've got those links active. Today, they might not link that way, but we can make sure it is set up that way. Okay? Okay. And then, the second topic I'd like to talk about with item number three is to share with you the public comments that we received. We had a 37-day public comment period on the SMP. And at your last meeting, we have received a letter from the Port of Everett, and they had commented on two items. And staff has reviewed the comments from the port and would like to respond to those so that you know what our recommendations are. So, the first topic dealt with proposed changes from the port, dealing with shoreline permits, specifically Section Number 2 and Chapter 2 that describes substantial development permit requirements. And the port had added a couple of proposed sentences dealing with maintenance activities as well as clarifying docks and floats for private, non-commercial use. And they referenced on the same page of the Shoreline Master Program, page 32, where item number five, the section, talks about exemptions. So, when staff looked at this, we realized that it's really addressed in the exemptions section with the new wording referring to projects designed to improve habitat or fish passage that are consistent with the RCW 7055-181 are exempt from obtaining a shoreline substantial development permit. We have included that in the proposed changes. In addition, as we do now, exemptions that are considered here at the city for exemptions from obtaining a shoreline substantial development permit, we use the state exemption criteria. So, those are in the WAC as well as in the RCW, and so we are not proposing any changes to how we determine exemptions, be it for maintenance or repair of existing structures or those types of things. So, in looking at the proposed wording of changes for number two, it seemed like it was getting more specific to port projects than we really needed to and that it was already covered under number five. So, the upshot of it is that staff does not recommend making these proposed specific wording changes to Section 2, the substantial development permit. The second topic that the port addressed was in the public access section and the regulations dealing with projects that meet criteria that are determined by the Planning Director or the Hearing Examiner but are not required to provide onsite public access, but need to provide either offsite public access or pay an in lieu fee. So, we have been working on this section utilizing resolution from the Port of Everett that has been in place since 2002, 2000, August 2000. So, what we are doing is putting the operative sections, the criteria, from that resolution within the Shoreline Master Program as regulations. So, you should have a piece of paper in front of you, just a one-page, entitled Public Access Regulations. And the red highlighted wording there, you have seen before until you get down to item F, starting with if the applicant opts to pay. So, that wording has been modified. And then, there's G and H, which are new options, if you will, related to providing public access that are consistent with the resolution from the port and are now proposed to be included in the Shoreline Master Program regulations. So, the redlined copy that you have in front of you is what staff and the Port of Everett have worked out together that address the port's comments and that City of Everett's staff feels is appropriate to include in the document. And then, the third item that was not brought up by the port, but when staff was looking at the integration of regulations that we're doing now, sort of the consolidation, and in particular, looking at our sign code, which I think you've had some briefings on and will be continuing to discuss over the next month or so. In looking at our shoreline use table, number 5.1, and how we're addressing sign regulations in the SMP, it was, felt that we could consolidate the sign regulations because there weren't that many that were unique for shoreline jurisdiction. And so, since we're working on that part of the code for citywide purposes, we're proposing a slight modification of how signs are addressed in the Shoreline Master Program. And right now, the regulations refer to our existing code with the regulatory statement, "All signs shall comply with Chapter 19.36." So, we're already addressing the user to the code sections anyways. So, what we're proposing to focus on here within the SMP is to focus on outdoor advertising signs, which are typically considered billboards, and make sure that that prohibition of no billboards within shoreline jurisdiction will be allowed is contained in the Shoreline Master Program and that other specific regulations will be within the sign code in the municipal code. So, and so, the reference will be to there and that that just kind of consolidates the regulations. So, that's a second one-page handout that you have with the blue highlights is reflecting those proposed changes. And so, those are the comments and proposed changes that staff has for the draft that is under your consideration. So, does anybody have any questions about any of those items? Any questions? Welcome.
Thank you. Sorry. I guess I just had one question. The port's comments about the public access and the fee, is that, that doesn't change any substantive policy that previously existed, or is this just clarifying language mostly?
It's bringing the practice that we've had with the port since 2000 that's in their resolution into our actual SMP. So, it's something in between what you were saying. So, it's not changing things substantively, so it's more of a process, but it's also establishing, there could be other particular shoreline applicants who would come in who might be affected by the same approach. So, we're trying to be consistent across the board, too, so that might be a nuance of an extension of this approach. But it also talks about the 1% for below-grade utility projects. That has been a past practice, but that I don't believe was specifically written within the SMP. So, we're just making everything clear how we're providing shoreline public access.
Thank you.
All right. We have no more further questions. I think we'll return to the original programming. And actually, does anybody want to move to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Did you approve? Or no, did you motion to?
Alan.
Adam. Adam. I understand.
Did I miss the vote?
Who did that?
I'm still.
We're playing with you.
Working off all that traffic I went to.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Abstain.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavera.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck, or Chair Beck, sorry.
Yes. All right. And so, Commissioner Tisdale, Commissioner Yanisak, do you have any reports or anything you want to talk about? All right. Well, then, we'll go ahead and move on to item number one, which is a public hearing on the Comprehensive Plan. Let David take it away.
Thank you. David Stahlheim, Long Range Planning Manager. And walk through, this is the 2018, 2019 Annual Docket Amendments. We're proposing some changes to both the land use and urban design elements. So, substantively, it consists of three different amendments. First, we would add East Marine View Drive to the list of gateway corridors. Second, we've added some language and some parts to address strategic plans for key business corridors and districts. And third, it would simplify the land use element. So, first off, East Marine View Drive being added as a gateway corridor. This is a request from the Delta Neighborhood Association. What this would do is it would basically draw attention to the design and maintenance of public transportation and visual improvements. It doesn't have any regulatory effect, per se. There's no development regulations that are tied to this. It really has to do with encouraging and stimulating redevelopment and kind of the visual improvements along that corridor. And other parts of Marine View Drive are already designated for this. The second item is key business quarters and districts, and this is following off of the mayor's directive of early last year now. And her directive was to look at strategic plans for key quarters and districts, and she identified those in her directive, including the Broadway, College District, Payne Field, Evergreen Way, the Everett Mall, and Metro Everett. And so, we've identified some amendments that, and some updates that we've done to existing language, but key amendments that we have in the land use element is we've added the five priority areas per the mayor directive. We've also added Evergreen Way and Arturo Quarters as an area to focus on for redevelopment, and we added Everett Mall as a focus area. And so, those are the three really substantive additions to language to address the mayor's directive. The last and probably the largest part of the Docket Amendments is to simplify the land use amendment. And really, there's, again, three parts to this. First off is to simplify the land use map designations. Second is to simplify the land use policies. And then, finally, is to reduce and update background text within the land use element. So, the purpose of these amendments really is to clearly articulate a vision for the city. Right now, as you, as you read through the plan, nearly 200 goals, objectives, and policies, it's hard to identify what that vision is. It's hard to identify what the vision is when you look at a map that has 28 different designations. And so, really, it's trying to allow us to step back and keep the existing vision, but to clearly articulate that and not to change course from what we have right now, but to step back and be able to look at that so that we can start analyzing that vision a little bit more specifically as we look at the code update, which is the next phase of this project that we'd be doing basically over the next year and a half. The biggest issues that we see in the code update as part of this is focusing on some of the housing policies in particular. One of the other directives from the mayor was to develop a housing strategy, and so we'll be looking at the land use component and the land use regulations with respect to housing and how that would implement a housing strategy. And also, going to use this opportunity to focus on design guidelines for particularly commercial and mixed-use quarters. We have multiple mixed or commercial and multifamily design guidelines all over the city, and some of them are almost alike but not quite. And so, it just adds a lot of additional code language that really doesn't enhance really the quality of life or the vision for the city. And so, setting that framework for part of the code update is part of this land use amendment. So, with the land use map designations, we're looking at consolidating 28 designations into six groups. We've, we've had a couple work sessions with the Planning Commission and have briefed city council on, on these. And so, the six groups are major categories, so two residential categories, one single family and one multifamily. Metro Everett is a category, and so, there's three land use designations itself within the Metro Everett Subarea Plan, but when we look at the overall city plan, there would just be one designation. We'd have a designation of commercial mixed use, industrial, and then, last one of local resource lands, which is, we have some lands that are designated agriculture, aquatic, open space, parks, and water resource management. Something happened to the heading on this. This was afraid of. I did this on my home computer, and I think there's some fonts that don't transfer. So, anyhow, it says something at the top, but the bottom part is actually the part that is important. And so, really, this is trying to get a sense of how this map was built. And so, the new land use designations, the six designations, what we did is we just took the zoning equivalent. The single-family zones are all residential, single-family, so RS, R1, R1A, R2, and R2A. So, all those existing zoning designations are now grouped together into residential, single-family. Same thing for multifamily, all the multifamily zones, Metro Everett, Metropolitan Center. As you can see, we have a lot of commercial mixed-use zones, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine different commercial zones that would go into the commercial mixed-use land use designation. All the industrials into one designation, all the local resource lands into one. But what this doesn't do is it doesn't change any of the zoning. So, I want to emphasize that. So, none of the zoning changes. So, all the zoning and, and all those, the long list of all those zoning designations and the regulatory effect of all that zoning remains. The land use element, all it does is, this is just trying to explain how we built the map. And so, all the regulations stay in effect in that area, but that's what we'll be looking at in the next year and a half is to say, okay, do we really need 10 different residential zoning districts? Do we really need all those commercial mixed-use zoning districts? How can we consolidate and simplify that? But we're not there yet. We're just starting that conversation as, as part of this effort. Kind of as mentioned, the land use map boundaries, all the existing boundaries are maintained. Again, all single-family zones are designated single-family, multifamily likewise, with two exceptions that we've called out in the memo. First off is Simpson Pad. That was designated originally waterfront, commercial, but it's developed as residential, single-family. So, we've changed that to residential, single-family. There's also some public lands around that, and we changed that to public resource lands as well. And outside-city limits, because we didn't have a zoning equivalent, outside-city limits, we actually looked at the county's plan for that area, and we found some inconsistencies between what the county's plan and the city's plan was, and so, we used the county's plan for consistency purposes. There is, there probably, you know, over time, there probably were some land use and zoning designation changes perhaps in that area, or maybe they were never synced up, but basically, using their designations. And it's a long ways from ever we'd be considering annexation of those areas, but the land use plan would help set up that framework for any zoning in the future. So, one of the requirements of the Growth Management Act is that we have a requirement for internal consistency of our document and that our development regulations have to implement the plan. And so, some of the things that we've had to put into as part of this rewrite is to look at a few of those GMA, Growth Management Act, requirements. And one is it requires that we anticipate what the population and building intensities are. And so, there's a table in there that really looks at what those population and building intensities really would be. And we've, based on the comments at the last Planning Commission meeting, we've, we've clarified a little bit that really what that is is a range of population and building intensities. And so, when we talk about the multifamily zone, it's up to 10 stories. And so, we identify that the multifamily zone in some areas could be considered up to 10 stories, but it doesn't mean that it's always up to 10 stories. That's going to be part of our development regulation review that we're going to do over the next year and a half. The other thing is that we have to think about the criteria for the new designation. So, when we have six new groupings of land use, it was easy, relatively easy for us to take the existing zoning and merge it into it, but think five years down the road, someone comes in and wants to change the land use from a single-family to multifamily. You need to have some kind of criteria to help guide that, that decision-making. And so, we have locational criteria for the six land use designations as well that are proposed within the land use element. And then, last was actually that other table that I showed you was the equivalent zoning. So, again, that the development regulations have to implement the plan, so we identify which of those zoning districts are part of that land use element. So, we show that there's a relationship between the zoning code and, and the land use element. However, we also recognize that we need to do more work in the next year and do another amendment to the land use plan because as we develop more, more zoning designations, you know, I, I don't think that we'll end up with six zoning districts. You know, we'll have quite a few more than that, but we have to have some criteria in the land use element that also helps guide that, those zoning district decisions. And so, right now, we have equivalent zoning, but we have to come back in our Docket Amendments next year and amend the language to say, okay, our new residential, single-family, 20-zone, or whatever we're going to call it, this is the criteria for where that is going to be considered and have that within the plan. So, we would come back next year with additional plan amendments along with code changes as required. And again, there are no zoning code changes proposed as part of this action that's before the Planning Commission. However, that's next year. And so, what we want to do is we want to start engaging the public. I know that I'm going to three neighborhood meetings in the next month to start engaging the public in, in that conversation, and I want to make sure that we get the word out that we want to get input early as part of that process. There's other text amendments. Again, we're reducing nearly 200 goals, objectives, and policies, and, and we've kind of walked through some of the rationale in the memo that we provided to you, and we're reducing and updating a lot of the background text. So, again, trying to get to a land use element that is a little bit more readable is still probably about 20 pages too long from, from most people's perspective that would want to look at something and kind of feel for a vision for the community. But we really didn't want to go so deep into this that we'd end up with some really substantive changes that really wasn't part of the scope of what we really wanted to do. We wanted to kind of keep the existing vision intact and kind of look at this as a first step consolidation process for the public's considerations. So, with that, if there's any questions before the hearing, I'd like to try to answer them.
Any questions?
Slide nine, I think it's probably, we don't talk about condos or townhomes. Are those going to fall into residential, or those going to fall into multifamily?
Well, they'll fall into residential. They could fall into multifamily, but sometimes condos could even be single-family because we see some, in fact, I was doing some data review for buildable land stuff for the county, and I saw a couple duplexes that were kind of minimized. So, so, a duplex could.
So, that will be spelled out when we go back to slide number nine, where it talked about the different.
Yeah. When we start getting into.
Residential, single, and residential, multi, it would be spelled out in there that condos fit here and condos fit there and townhomes.
Well, when we get to the zoning stuff, what we'll talk about is really is the housing type and how many units are there, not necessarily how the ownership is. And condo is really a form of ownership, and so, we would, we would talk about whether duplexes or triplexes are allowed in that zone.
Thank you.
Things like that.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
In thinking about the streamlined land use element and pondering guidance for the Hearing Examiner, I came up with a concern that you may have addressed in your remarks. I just want to confirm that. I was thinking in terms of thinking about the multifamily land use designation, the fact that there, there's a whole range of multifamily in terms of intensity and building height and so on, and we need, I think, some criteria. If we're going to just have one multifamily residential land use designation, I think we need some criteria to indicate to the Hearing Examiner or to the staff if it's a staff decision about rezone requests in the future, because I'm assuming we, we will have probably more than one multifamily zone. a staff decision, about rezone requests in the future, because I'm assuming we will have probably more than one multifamily zone, even with a consolidated zoning district or scheme. And I just, there is a policy I noticed, if I can find it here. It's in your markup copy on page 50. If I got this one right. No, excuse me, wrong page. It's on page 18. It's, I think, policy 2.2, I think it's now 0.4. It's at the bottom of that page, and it addresses commercial, but it has criteria in there for different types of commercial. And my thought was, we could probably use something like that in the multifamily, so that when there's a rezone request within that designation, that there are some places where higher density and taller buildings will be appropriate, and other places where they won't be. So, if the intent is, in your comment, maybe to get to that next year as part of the, looking at the zoning, then I think that would do it. I just happened to notice this particular policy already in there addressing commercial. And maybe an analog for multifamily would be good, too.
Commissioner Zalinski, being a planner, knows some of the nuances of growth management, so for those of you that might not have understood a little bit of the technical side of this. So, under the Growth Management Act, because we have now six land use designations, so when we designate multifamily, and if we have more multifamily zones, rezone requests no longer would require a comprehensive plan amendment. And so, to guide that rezone request, that could go to the hearing examiner and city council for that. And so, how do you guide that decision between, say, two multifamily zoning districts? And so, yeah, that's what we see as a need, as we go through the code streamlining the next year and a half, is to write that criteria once we have more discussion with the public of what that framework is that we think is the appropriate framework. So, we would then bring that back into the plan as a policy discussion with the planning commission and council, that this is what we want the hearing examiner to be guided by when they make a decision between the two multifamily zoning districts or the four commercial zoning districts, for example, things like that. And so, we would want to have that criteria within the plan, and so, that is the next phase next year, where we would come back with another set of amendments for that.
Thank you. Saved the applicant a lot of time by just being-
It would, because it wouldn't be part of a docket process, it would be a rezone request, yes.
I guess I, maybe I'm missing something. I just, I'm not a planner, so I don't know how that works. But doing it, you're doing, if we did this amendment, then waited a year for the next one, in that interim period, is there going to be confusion, or if we don't provide for that at the same time, would the zoning changes to match up?
Yeah, I don't think there's confusion. I think he would still be guided by what's in the document right now, but in terms of some implementation, actually, Alan and I haven't actually talked about this, so I'm winging it a little bit, but I mean, there's, so, he can say otherwise, but I mean, we could do some interim things in the year period of time as well. I mean, we could say, not all the rezone requests have to go to the hearing examiner. We could do in the year period of time and say that they go through the planning commission as a procedural thing, or we just don't consider a rezone request for a year as part of this. So, I mean, there's a couple of different ways to address the concern. I don't think that anyone's knocking on the door to do any of that, because I have to go through a lot of work to do that anyhow, so I wouldn't anticipate that's a real worry, but if that was considered a real worry, then we can try to address that before this package was adopted.
Yeah, I have no idea how common that is, or how frequently that happens.
Well, quite often, the requests for rezone changes are very, I mean, this is our annual document, and we have no private requests here whatsoever, and I think last year, we had one property of, you know, 6,000 square foot lot, you know, something like that, and kind of thing. So, I think it's very unusual that we have any requests, and I, so, that doesn't mean that they won't come in, though.
Any other questions? So, do we want to open this up to public comment? I think we have two people that would like to speak. Mary Foss, could you please come to the podium?
Hi.
Hi, welcome. Just state your name and address.
My name's Mary Fossy, and I'm in the Delta Neighborhood, 1202 Walnut Street. And I wanted to express my support for the Gateway Corridor designation for East Marine View Drive. We're pretty excited about that. And I also had a question about a specific policy that looks like it's being nixed from this. It's on page 25, and I'll just read it to you. Policy 2.1.11, encourage urban agriculture, including community gardens, pea patches, school gardens, home gardens, and urban farms, and important community resources that provide open space, as well as improve healthy and local food access, build social connections, and offer recreation, education, and economic development opportunities. I understand why it's being nixed as far as cleaning things up and not having excess in here, but my question is, then, where does that lie with the planning department in encouraging that sort of thing? Because a byproduct of that, while it doesn't specifically state it, is the effect that has on our local wildlife, our local bee population, things that just make our community really amazing, and keeping those things around is really kind of important. So, I'm not sure where that would be fixed, but I'm sad to see it go. The other thing, lastly, is I'm sure some of my neighbors had possibly talked about this previously. In some of your changes, there's a lot of concern around the East Marine View Drive area and the heights of the buildings there, and it's not just where it looks like it's being zoned for the multifamily, but also where it's being zoned commercially. If you guys are able to do any sort of 3D mapping showing what kind of effects some of this will have on some neighborhoods in particular, that would be very, very useful for some of us that are not good at reading these things and getting that kind of communication out to our neighbors who may be more visual learners, because I fear that what might happen on East Marine View Drive is that we end up with a bunch of tall buildings there, and that completely blocks Everett's view that we're known for, and I just want to make sure you guys take that into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Actually, that's a good question in terms of the policy on the pea patches. Did it, has it just been eliminated from, or has it kind of been consolidated in another?
The, yeah, that policy isn't really directive as far as putting anything into a regulation.
Right.
We do allow for pea patches and community gardens. We don't really need a policy to tell us to allow pea patches and community gardens.
And they're good things.
That was the rationale behind that, along with just trying to make the code really more stating of a vision, and that was a little bit more of an implementation type of a directive.
Thank you. And in terms of the heights and stuff, we'll be addressing that as we go into the zoning code, so there'll be opportunity for the Delta Neighborhood to have some feedback and express.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right. Brian Weber, and if I mispronounce names, I do apologize.
You pronounced it correctly. It's Weber, not Weaver. Thank you. I live at 1522 Chestnut Street, also in the Delta Neighborhood. I guess just to start with the comment about pea patches and green space, we are actually on schedule to lose one of our pea patches in currently Everett Housing Authority land. We're also, in part of the sale of their property, we're going to lose part of what has been used as part of Wiggums Hollow Park, and we're losing part of Jackson Park to, I'm not sure what the correct term is, but it's kind of a land swap or sale to a developer to build the River View project on Marine View Drive. So, we do have concerns that our green space is shrinking, and as that River View development is built, we're going to lose some of what, in the Shoreline Master Plan, they refer to views of the water, mountains, et cetera, as, is it, public space, I believe? Might be getting that partly wrong, but, so, we're losing public space, and a lot of people are losing views of the mountains, the sunrise, and part of our, both of our large parks. Some other, another concern I have with the land use designations being updated is that this, I guess, opens the door to potentially building eight to 10 stories on East Marine View Drive. I do support the designation as a Gateway Corridor, so some growth and planning certainly is welcome there, but if we go up that high, you know, from Broadway, looking down, you know, Delta faces eastward on a down slope, you know, it's going to be like a fishbowl looking down. Most residents will be looking down at buildings that are taller than their homes. So, you know, I don't think anything along that height would be appropriate there. Also, if you're looking at updating the code, I would look at not allowing for gated suburban style apartment complexes. That's what River View is planning to do. They're going to gate off the whole property, you know, which is not consistent with a more dense urban and walkable neighborhood. So, I would recommend that you consider that be added to the code to improve the walkability and urban feel of, as we're increasing density, I think that's pretty important. I think that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody want to move to close the public hearing? Do we have any other comments? I kind of ran through the people who've signed up.
I guess, guys, a question to follow up, because I know, David, you mentioned in your remarks about the building heights. It's not, you said certain areas up to 10 stories, that would be, I guess, can you talk a little more about, that's not, this amendment don't contemplate exactly where that would happen in any particular location, is that right?
Correct, but it sets as a policy that we would allow consideration of up to 10 stories of multifamily when we write the zoning code.
But that would still require the developer at that time to come and present and-
Well, we'd have to write the codes and identify which areas that that would be acceptable, and so, we'll go through the process to identify where that might work, and that's part of the public process to figure out where that might work. It might not work anywhere. Right now, we go up to eight stories, and so, this is another two stories above that, so.
So, just to give the flexibility, then, depending on where something might be-
If we find a place that can accommodate up to 10 stories, right. We may end up not finding that that will work at this time in Everett, other than downtown.
Thank you. I'd move to close the public hearing.
I'd second that.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVra?
Yes.
Chair Back?
Yes.
It's heavy lift. I don't have any, anything that makes it simpler and streamlined, I'll support. Any other comments from?
No, I would concur.
Let me get this resolution out here. So, this would be the first resolution of the new year for us, so this is Planning
I would move for adoption.
Any seconds?
I'll second that motion.
Oh, yeah. Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVra?
Yes.
Chair Back?
Yes.
All right, and since I got a little off schedule there, I'm a bit remiss, and then we need to go into item number two, but I didn't ask, is there anybody here, just looking out, I didn't see it, but that wanted to speak publicly about anything that wasn't on the agenda? I know it's a little late in the game, but still want to, okay, all right, then we'll move on. All right, so we're going into the public hearing, item number two, on the code amendments related to the Metro Everett and off-street parking. David, you're up again.
All right, I think we briefed the planning commission on this package at the last meeting, so run through this real quickly. There's three different areas. We're looking at five amendments for off-street parking, three amendments tied to land divisions, and six that are tied to development standards. In the off-street parking, looking at when a transportation demand management plan is required, some issues of separation of surface parking lots from right-of-way, parking lot locations in the Metro Everett's light industrial zone, some parking lot landscaping and screening, and then off-street parking for multifamily in the E1 mixed-use overlay zone. Land division changes have to do with parking improvements with respect to garages, lot access and new land divisions, then allowing unit lot subdivisions to be in the Metro Everett zones. For development standards, the six that we had are looking at changes to the upper floor building modulation in the urban mixed zone, the driveway approach apron, which is in Title 13. And by the way, we made some, that's where, area where we made some adjustments, rather than calling it the length of the apron, we're really talking about the width, and so, trying to make that clear, both in the title and the text, and so, we made those changes from the last meeting. Driveway approaches, general things and authority, design standards in the E1 mixed-use overlay, multifamily pedestrian access, which is just a section heading only, and so, I'm just running down through the list. Now that I'm just reading the list, they seem like those are big, meaty subjects, but behind every one of these amendments is pretty much a little, tiny little housekeeping thing that we missed in the package of all the Metro Everett amendments. And so, if there's any details in any of those you want me to walk through, glad to walk through that and cover that.
Does anyone have questions? All right, then we'll go ahead and open it up. I have one person who'd like to speak on this, Earl Hall. Welcome, Mr. Hall.
So, I'm Earl Hall, I live at 34th and Colby, and my specific thing, actually, it's not a change, it's apparently an existing regulation right now. On page one of five, Amendment Two, Location of Off-Street Parking, B Parking Location, Three, Separation of Surface Parking Lots. The first paragraph, or the first section A currently reads, "Surface parking lot shall not be located between buildings and Broadway or Evergreen Way." I had trouble reading that, trying to figure out what it meant. I thought maybe that "and" should be "on." Parking lot shall not be between buildings on Broadway or Evergreen Way, or alternative would be, if it is on, do we want to have some area of Broadway or Evergreen Way, wherever we want that? I mean, do we want to have no parking lots between buildings on the entire Evergreen Way from within the city limits? Way from within the city limits? Or do we want it just between certain areas? So that, that is just my, my question or comments is just specifically on that paragraph 3A, what, what that means. Is that, is that a typo or what, what is it? So that's it.
David, could you address that?
Yeah. It's a great observation when you're reading the text alone in isolation. That section actually has a diagram to explain what that means. So, so the words are not as artful as the diagram perhaps in this case. But really what this has to do is you have the road, say Broadway, and you have buildings on the private property, and this is saying, don't put the parking lots between the buildings and the road. So that's what it is, and the diagram shows that.
Okay.
In other word, in other words, not in front of the building.
Not in front of the building.
Yeah. Write it that way, David.
Okay.
That might be actually a better way of saying in front of buildings.
Okay.
Along Broadway or Evergreen Way.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay. Do I hear a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVra?
Yes.
Chair Beck?
Yes.
Anybody have questions or anything else? Pull up this resolution.
That's pretty good.
And this would be Resolution 1902, for the city to amend Title 13 Streets and sidewalks, Title 18 Land Division, and Title 19 Zoning Regarding Ordinances Implementing the Metro Everett Plan and Parking, Loading, and Access Requirements.
I move adoption.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVra?
Yes.
Chair Beck?
Yes.
All right. So we're going to move along to item number four, Critical Area Amendments. And I guess it's you, Alan, or who's in for Dave?
I haven't told Alan this far yet. Surprised. Yeah, no, Dave Tyler, thinking that this was a five-minute presentation, I said, you don't have to come tonight. I'll cover it for you. So I'm going to cover it for Mr. Tyler tonight. So this is just kind of a quick briefing before you're scheduled to have the hearing at the next meeting. And so similar to some of the set of amendments that Karen talked about with the shoreline, we have two, two amendments to the zoning code and then also to Title 15, Local Project Review. These are both in the zoning amendments and in the local project review, well, actually in the zoning amendments, they're both, some of the consistency requirements for both the shoreline program and the critical areas amendments. And so the zoning changes removes a shoreline overlay district from the zoning code. So similar to what Karen had mentioned about taking the shoreline element out of the comprehensive plan, we're taking the shoreline regulations out of the zoning code, and so they'll all stand under the shoreline master program. And then we're amending certain definitions for critical areas, we're adding some new definitions, and relocating all the critical areas definitions to a new section of the code. So it's clear when you're looking for critical areas definitions where you can find those, and that some of them have specific meaning to the critical areas language. And then there's been, in the past, based on some endangered species and some other issues, we've had some planning director interpretations that got put into the shoreline master program and into the zoning code. And we've addressed those in both the master program and the code. And so we're taking those things out now because we've addressed those, those issues. In the Title 15, the Local Project Review, establishing a review process for buffer width averaging. So depending on that, and I think Dave had walked through those, those different options at the last meeting, the buffer width averaging, and then the review process for critical exception for public utilities and infrastructure from a type three hearing examiner to a type one administrative. And so the, the exhibits, all the language of these amendments, of both amendments to zoning code and Title 15 Local Project Review are, are there. We're glad to try to answer the questions, but largely was try to get this in front of you ahead of the hearing. So if you have any issues, give us a holler in advance of the hearing, we'll try to answer them as well.
Anyone have questions?
I'm the troublemaker tonight. I, I sort of understand why you would want to get rid of a formal overlay district in the zoning map, but I think it might be helpful for users to have something on the zoning map showing where the shoreline master plan applies. So that, because you and I both know that people go to the zoning map if they're looking at buying a piece of property or developing a piece of property to see what the appropriate regulations are. I think it'd be good to have something on that map that points you to the shoreline master plan.
Yeah, we're going to try to, or not try, but we will address that in a couple different ways. I think that if you look at, like, the maps on the way out, I brought the land use consolidation maps, seeing where that little thin 200-foot line is on a, on a printed map is pretty hard, hard to see. So it's pretty hard to put into a printed version, but the electronic versions, we can do that. And what we're really trying to do, and hopefully we'll have this in place not too long, is to go where some jurisdictions are with an online interactive map where you can type in your address and you can get a property report. They'll actually identify what your zoning is, what your shorelines are, whether or not there's any historic resource designations on your property or you're in an overlay district. And so you'll get a, you'll be able to click on a report, a property report, they'll run all the code requirements, so you won't miss anything. That'll be helpful to the public, but also be helpful to staff and kind of thing. So we're working on getting that software in place and all the tools in place to have that. And so hopefully, before the, too long, we'll have that available to the public, so things like that won't get missed.
Yeah, that would be very useful, I think.
Any other questions? Well, any other comments for the good of the order? We've kind of run through the items. Does staff have comments?
Yes, Alan Giffen. It did occur to me that I do have a comment for you. Kathy, were these, okay, Kathy distributed some notebooks related to the March 26 hearing on the riverfront. I want to point out, these are just some, some more of the application materials that I did not provide for you in front of your workshop last week. This does not have a staff report or recommendation yet, so that will be coming about a week or so ahead of your hearing. And in the memo, I mentioned that, but I didn't want you to, that this was the complete packet for the hearing on the 26th.
Okay. Do we have an extra one? Okay. I just want one. Okay. Anything else? Any other comments? I think that's a wrap. Thank you.
And the first two resolutions.